Twenty-nine. Sorry, just got through the traffic in the rain. All right, so Ms. Cody?
I think we have to wait five minutes.
You've got to wait five minutes in case somebody has questions?
Yes.
But we don't. We'll wait and put it up. And yeah, next session.
I can't see what I'm on. I can't see what I'm on.
There's definitely hail. I was hoping that it would hit my car. So that was probably good. Yeah.
She calls me three twenty-one. It's going to be here four. I'm a murdered bus lady. I don't see anything.
Five minutes. Oh, you're too young for the course. Keeping up a day in sweat, post. Oh, my God. Is he reminiscing?
I have seen it.
He has to be reminiscing.
For real?
I don't know.
But he's, uh...
He's seven-three.
Our work session for tonight. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Spence for items of information.
All right, I'm going to let, I'm going to let Ms. Shelley Daniel go first. She is actually the last one on, but she has to be somewhere. So I'm going to let, with the community eligibility provision. Dee Tooten.
Thank you. We are catering Golden Rule tonight, so we have lots of guests to be ready for soon. So I just want to share the information about community eligibility provision. I know this is something that we've met on, and we're hoping the board has more information, and maybe it's something that we want to offer to our community. And so, community eligibility provision was first piloted in 2012. It's in over a hundred counties, districts across the state. And so what it is, is a non-pricing meal program for our schools. It's for breakfast and lunch. All students that are enrolled would eat at no cost without collecting applications. And so that is all based on students that are directly certified. And so, do you want me to scroll this? Okay. Okay. So when we talk about direct certification, as of the first of April this year, we had fifty-five, almost fifty-six percent of our students that are directly certified in our county. What that means is they're receiving SNAP, TANF, homeless, migrant, foster, and now Medicaid. So we can count our Medicaid-free students. We have Medicaid-free and we have Medicaid-reduced. This only counts Medicaid students. So these are students who would be free without an application based on direct certification. So like I said, as of April 1st, we were right at fifty-six percent of our students are receiving these benefits and are free by direct certification. So what I want to do is kind of give you an oversight of the difference, kind of comparing free and reduced applications to CEP, Operating Community Eligibility Provision. So at the top, you'll see where it says free and reduced. We're talking about pre-K through 12. This year, as of October numbers, were our final numbers for school year '24, we were sixty-nine percent free or reduced. Now that included our students who were application. So the number of free students, reduced students, and paid students are there. And I wanted to show you, under the reduced category, there was 1,193 of our students that paid forty cents per lunch. So that's an annual fee if they ate every day of seventy-one dollars and twenty cent. Our paid students, and those are students who may be applied and did, were not eligible or didn't apply for free meals. There were 3,928 of those, and the meal price is two dollars and seventy-five cent for lunch, and the annual of four hundred and eighty-nine dollars and fifty cent is what those parents would pay for lunch at school. So if we operated under community eligibility, all of the students would eat at no cost. But what they do is they take your percentage of direct certified students, is that fifty, fifty-six percent, we'll just round it up, times the federal multiplier, which is 1.6, and that hasn't changed since 2012. So they use that as an identifier to say, what would your free and reduced be if you were accepting applications? And for us, if we use our DC number times the federal multiplier, we would be right at eighty-nine point one-seven percent free and ten, eleven percent paid. So what that would look like for us is those numbers kind of break down for the same number of students, how many we would receive free reimbursement for, and how many students we would see, receive paid reimbursement for. So when we serve a free meal, I may be jumping ahead. Scroll down to the next slide for me. Well, let me talk about this. So when we, we serve a free meal, we receive four dollars and thirty, forty-three cents for that meal. When we receive, when we serve a student in a paid status, we only receive eighty-seven cents for that meal. So what, what CEP allows you to do is operate receiving that percentage of students, that 11,000 students, if they ate every day, that, that percentage of eighty-nine percent, we would receive paid free reimbursement, and then paid reimbursement for eleven percent of them. So that's how our income would come in to fund our program. So let's just talk about the pros of community eligibility provision. The pro is all students eat breakfast and lunch at no charge. CEP promotes equity across the district. It eliminates any students having out-of-pocket funds, having to pay for meals at the service line. It makes the lines move a lot quicker, you know, when we're operating CEP. And number three, CEP reduces administrative burdens, like eliminating meal applications. None of that would go out at the beginning of the year. Counting and claiming by fee-free category, having students to, you know, publicly kind of, we try to keep that as private as possible, but students at high school figure it out, you know, who's, who's free, reduced, and paid. So there's kind of, it kind of eliminates that issue. The counting and claiming by fee category, verification. We would no longer have to ask parents to turn in their income documents so as to verify that percentage of students that would be under the free category or reduced category. And then, collecting meal charges. We have a hard time with students sometimes paying those meal charges when they, they should, or parents paying those meal charges when they should. And so we have someone helping collect those funds. We have administrators that get involved to help collect the funds. The teacher's involved with that, so that kind of eliminates that. The community eligibility provision is a four-year cycle. So if we became, if we accepted CEP and we wanted to operate under the CEP guidelines, that would, we would be approved for four years. And in four years, we would recertify and have a base year to operate.
It's just that one?
Okay, just that one. Okay. So let's talk about possible concerns of operating community, under the community eligibility provision. Number one would be, a lot of school leaders are involved in, are concerned with costs. So what we did is we took how many students we operated, I mean, how many students we served in August, September, each month this year. And then we said, if we did not increase meal participation and we served the same number of kids, could we possibly lose money? Yes. However, if you, you're going to increase when you're serving kids at no cost. And we proved that during COVID, because we, more kids eat with us when the meal is at no cost. So again, we'll put the multiplier out, the paid reimbursement. Eighty-nine percent of our kids, we received the paid and, and right at eleven percent free. So if lunch participation, we determined, we said, okay, if it increases how much, how could we equal the budget? How could we make sure that we're collecting the same amount of money as we did under free and reduced meal applications? And with that, if we increased at each school twenty to twenty-eight lunch meals per day, we would stay balanced. The same amount of income would come in operating under community eligibility provision. So with that, we met with administrative team, and we determined that we felt like every school would at least increase twenty to twenty-eight meals. You know, each school's a little larger. But twenty to twenty-eight meals to make sure that we don't lose revenue in that, in that case. The other concern, possible concern, is public opinion about all students eating for free. And one of the things that's communicated out from the State Department and communicated from other districts is we provide education, transportation, and books at no cost. However, we're charging for meals. So why wouldn't we want to offer meals at no cost as well and not collect those funds? But those are also concerns that come from some of the, you know, public opinion on that. So I think Dr. Spence just wanted me to kind of present that we are now eligible, and the reason that we're eligible to operate CEP is because we've had such an increase in free meals, eighteen percent increase due to Medicaid-free students being added. And so now we could operate CEP, Community Eligibility Provision, without losing revenue to our budget if we increased meals at twenty to twenty-eight percent. So are there any questions about operating?
What if that multiplier of 1.6 ever changes?
You know, I, in 2012, I was in Thomason Upson School District, and I was a pilot school for that, and it was 1.6. And that was a big concern for me at that time. However, it hasn't changed since 2012.
Right. But is that a possibility?
I mean, it could. It could. What they're looking is to see is how do we equal, how do we balance that if you're collecting applications versus CEP? That 1.6 multiplier is usually higher. I will tell you, they, originally, when we piloted CEP, you had to be forty percent or more DC certified, directly certified students. Now they've lowered it to twenty-eight percent, so...
And, you know, and each administration or whatever can change it the way they see fit. My concern would be, you know, if we did go that route, say it lasted ten years. I mean, that would be great. And then things change. And then now we go from one case scenario of everybody getting it free, and now we have to go back to being charged. So that's, you know, this, that would, that wouldn't look favorably upon the school system.
That would be the biggest challenge for, for me and my department is if we did, if we ever had to go that, you know, pushing to collect those meals and rallying the troops again to help collect, meaning to collect the funds and rallying the troops to collect the funds. That is, that's a concern.
So there are some variables.
The application process would just kick back in, right, to where they could apply for the free and reduced lunch?
Right. Now, when I say it's a four-year cycle, we would have been approved on a four-year cycle, but each year we can reevaluate. We can opt in and out. We're not committed for four years. But once you commit to it, it's something you need to be committed, you know, I feel you need to be committed to, because we wouldn't want to start collecting those.
Once we lock in for the four-year cycle, the multiplier will not increase in that four-year cycle, though?
Right. It should be set for four years. Yes, it would be set for four years. What we have to do to recertify in four years is our number of students will be DC. We would go back and have to look at it again, how many students are directly certified, and can we still operate with the percentage of students that we have directly certified? The thing is, is they started counting Medicaid-free, which increased.
Otherwise, we wouldn't have qualified.
We could increase eighteen percent by counting our Medicaid-free students, so...
It's important to remember that most school systems are doing this.
Mm-hmm.
I was going to ask you, you know, who all you taught doing our REISA, or percentage of how many are doing it?
My area consultant from the State Department, they're doing the validation now. She said forty-seven districts are new adding, you know, going through validation reviews to add. So I feel like at the beginning of the year, it's going to really hit the media, you know, what schools are now qualified that weren't before and how many are doing it. And so I asked her, and she told me forty-seven new validation reviews are going on. We've completed our validation review, and we are approved to move forward from the State Department.
So in our REISA, there's Effingham, Bryan, and us, we're the only ones not doing it currently.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Any reason they're not doing it? Or they're not eligible?
They wouldn't have qualified like us, but now they may qualify. They may be doing it.
Okay, I got you.
Their free and reduced is much lower percent.
We talked about this last year, but it would have cost us money. And so now we, it's not going to cost us any money.
As far as the district, as far as taxpayers, no additional, it's just a state program.
It's a federal program, and it saves, yeah, saves.
Is there any strings attached to it, like any waivers or anything that we've got to, okay?
One thing that I know Mr. Benson mentioned too is middle school, sometimes it's hard to get those students served within a twenty-minute, twenty-five-minute period. You, you can go to, your meal counting is not collecting money at the register. You know, it makes that meal service really go faster, much faster.
Any other questions from the stand?
Do we need to vote on it, or what do we, do we need to vote on it, or?
We can vote on it Tuesday. We can just do it.
I mean, I didn't know what you needed to do.
I was just bringing it to you just to be open.
Let you know we're doing it. Okay. Thank you.
Moving back up to the top with Ms. Cody with the March financials.
Okay, so we did have a few budget amendments in March. We had two decreases to the budget to eliminate prior year grants that we did not receive this year. Then we had three increases. One was to record the midterm allotment adjustment, to record the one-time homeowners relief grant that we received, and then to adjust the local tax revenue for the increase in the digest over the original budget. Then our revenues are at eighty-five point one percent, and expenditures are at sixty-eight point three percent. The budget position is seventy-five percent as, as of the end of March. Then February sales tax collections were received in March in an amount of 2.8 million. The sales tax collections received this March were six percent higher than what we received in March of 2023.
I have a couple of questions. So with three months left to go, because these are the March financials, three months left to go in the year, is it likely we'll reach our amended budget for revenue?
Probably so. You know, of course, our, our tax collections, we're not, we're not receiving those. That's mainly in the fall.
Right.
But I doubt, I doubt we'll get to a hundred percent, probably. I mean, it will probably be about ninety percent.
Okay. And then as far as expenditures, what are you predicting for that?
You know, the expenditures have stayed down because of ESSER. And then, of course, we have vacant positions. So, you know, you can see that the salaries and benefits, those are at seventy-three point one, which, I mean, really isn't that much below, or no, seventy-one point eight. So I, I feel like that we're, our expenditures are going to be under what we budgeted. And I'm thinking that this is going to be the last year that it's going to be like that, because, you know, we're losing all those ESSER funds. And of course, students still have trouble hiring, so that's just going to be an ongoing problem.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Okay, so we will move on to the March investment analysis. So in March, we received $728,300 in interest. And then I just wanted to share that we do have some remaining investment securities that are going to be maturing in the next six to nine months. So as those mature, we will put those in money market accounts, which are currently earning 4.85 percent. So that's just kind of the plans for the securities that are, are going to be maturing over the next few months.
I'm going to go with the budget update, FY twenty-five.
Okay, so what I did is I highlighted the changes from last month. So we received the preliminary growth and inflation report from the tax assessor. And based on that, I reduced the property tax value increase from seven percent to four and a half percent. Now, once again, that's, that's an estimate until we get the actual tax digestion. So that did reduce the increase in property tax revenue. I think it was like about 1.6 million, 1.2 million. But we did receive the QBE initial allotment, and it was higher than what I had projected. So those two things really kind of balance each other out. Our, our estimated revenue stayed about the same. The only other change that I made is I adjusted the decrease in department budgets. Looking back through, there were, there were some new, new things that we added into ESSER that we're going to keep, that are going to have to be fixed out of the general fund. And there were some things we had moved out of the general fund into ESSER that had to be moved back. So last month, that figure, that decrease was a little bit higher, so I reduced the decrease. decrease was a little bit higher. So I, I reduced the decrease. So if we keep the milage rate the same, we're looking at total revenues of 185 million, total expenditures of 183.8, which puts us, revenues over expenditures about 1.2 million.
Do you have a, what it would look like to say with a quarter percent less milage rate or?
Quarter of a mil reduction. Yeah, so go down to your third page. Once again, it's these highlighted figures with the quarter of a mil reduction. So our property tax increase would be 3.7 million. Then all the other figures would stay the same. So our total revenues would be 183.4. Total expenditures stay the same, which puts our expenditures over our revenues, $361,400. But keep in mind that, that negative includes the $5.5 million transfer to the building fund. So that's technically in there as an expenditure, that transfer.
So that wouldn't be there the next?
If we wanted to be balanced, we would just reduce the transfer by $361,400. If that makes sense.
Because it's in the beginning expenditures, is that what you're saying?
Yep. So that would leave us with a, you know, $36 million fund balance.
Any other questions for Ms. Cody? Moving on to our strategic waiver applications, Dr. Nelson?
I think I'm using the mouse. I think it's me. Good evening. Hello again. So this is just kind of a review of the journey that we have, I don't have a keyboard. There we go. A review of the journey that we've taken through the strategic waiver process. And we're just going to kind of pick up from the waivers that our school system had previously requested and been granted in 2015, as well as the, a couple of additional waivers that we were, had added in 2019, when Godot opened the application portal again for districts to make updates to their plans. So our system's been operating as a strategic waiver school system since the 2016, 2017 school year. And much of what we're seeking with this application, the renewal, is just a continuation of many of those same waivers that we currently have in place. So we're going to begin tonight by taking a look at our strategic waiver contract. My TV keeps cutting out. I think y'all's are probably still working. So this is just kind of a brief bulleted outline of the contract. You all received that last month in your packet. But I, I think there are three things that I sort of have to review tonight and this is one of them. So under our contract, under OCGA 20-2-80 and State Board Rule 160-5-1-33, it provides Glen County schools the flexibility for all of our schools as well as the Career Academy, from certain state laws, rules, and regulations in exchange for greater accountability. And that same statute is what mandates the, that for each waiver and variance that we have to show improvement of student performance, or because in the baseline year of 22, 23, we met the, already, we already met the performance requirements, that we maintain those same level of, of student performance and financial accountability. And the CSI and ATSI schools, I wanted to kind of provide a definition of what that is. So CSI schools are comprehensive support and improvement schools, and those represent the lowest performing 5% of Title I schools. And ATSI schools are additional targeted support and improvement schools. And what those are, those look at subgroups within a school. So if any subgroup within one of those schools is low enough within the school itself, it can qualify a school to become a comprehensive support and improvement school all by itself. Glen County did not have any of those. The data's been released during 23, 24, based on the 22, 23 data, and we didn't have any. So for us to maintain our contract, we just have to maintain where we are academically. And financially, we also were not a high-risk system. We didn't have that designation, so we have to maintain our non-high-risk system designation. The academic and demographic data is collected through CCRPI. Our contract term is six years, beginning July 1 of '24 and expiring June 30 of 2030. We have to maintain accreditation and we, one new thing is there's a new process, part of the process, that each year we're responsible for submitting an annual report to the Department of Ed. That gives us an opportunity, they're going to open it up each year, if there are any additional waivers that we want to apply for, or if there are any that we have, that we received that we determine we don't need, we can back out of those. So that's going to be new. So now we're going to move into kind of the heart of the application, which are the actual waivers. Again, there's three main flexibility areas, academic, human resources, and financial. In the academic flexibility area, we had 17 waivers that we requested. Out of those 17, there's only three that are new for Glen County, one of which was not offered back in FY '15 when we first did our application. Instruction and nutrition, hygiene, etiquette, and social graces, that waiver would allow us the flexibility to embed those topics into our current curriculum and not teach those as a separate course. Promotion and retention, there are two waivers for those areas. We already have one of those, the state statutes waived, 20-2-283. This would waive the additional one, which gives us the flexibility to use alternative student performance measures to inform promotion and retention decisions. And then middle school program criteria is brand new as a waiver offering for this fiscal year, moving into next year. It's not been previously offered and it would allow flexibility in structuring and scheduling middle school classes, interdisciplinary team planning, and six-through-eight staffing. In the human resources flexibility area, there were 19 waivers, only one that was new for us. And this one is, is a pretty big one. It speaks to flexibility in the minimum qualifications for personnel. But where I think it's really important for us is it would eliminate that May 15 deadline that the state has had us under for a very long time for contracts, for contract approval for employees. And it also eliminates the requirement that we put salaries, that, not salaries, compensation calculations in contracts. Like right now, we have a formula that's in our contract that stipulates how we would pay an employee. We don't have, we wouldn't have to have that any longer. The last one is the financial flexibility. There were 10 waivers that we requested and only one was new. The state-funded K-8 subjects, we technically have that waiver already in place, but we hold that waiver, the 20-2-142, under academics. We are asking for it this time under financial flexibility. It outlines enrollment eligibility for kindergarten, it structures instructional calendar, and it determines the age and grade band for all grades.
Why wouldn't you want to keep the salary calculation in the contract?
The salary, the calculation is not bad on its own. In the past, we actually would put the amount of the salary in, which I think is kind of the purpose of what that speaks to. This would just give us the flexibility to take it all together if we chose to.
Okay. So you don't have to put the calculation or the salary in at all? So why would you want to do, I mean?
This just gives us the freedom to do it if we.
Doesn't it?
I know what you're going to give freedom, not to sign the contract. You know, I don't understand why you would not want to, how do the teachers know what they're getting paid? I've, I've heard people start, like teachers that are confused sometimes when they're trying to figure out, how many years am I getting credit for? What's my salary going to be? And they're, they're about to start school, they still don't kind of know what they're going to be paid. So I was just wondering, oh, we want to put it in the contract. You know, you're paying, you're getting paid $57, $50.
Their salary years are still there.
Salary years are still there. And also too, for new hires, we provide them with the salary sheet. And then also too, we make public what our salary schedules are for our teachers. They're, they're public. And so I'm not, we're not saying we wouldn't remove that, but it's what gives, give us the flexibility to remove it if we want to.
We're basically taking all the waivers.
Why would you ask for that?
We're basically taking all the waivers they're giving us.
Yeah, basically.
Yeah, that's what we're doing. Just saying, okay, we'll take it. We might not use it, but we'll take it.
The big part of that one for us.
In case one day we find a reason to do it.
The big part of that one for us, I think, is that May 15 deadline. Like our board meeting is May 14th and we've got to turn around and hand those contracts out the next day. So that part for me, that multi-year contract, that was the biggest part for me, is that we get a little bit of flexibility on that May 15 deadline. So that if we have to ooch our board meeting around a bit, it's not going to, because if we don't issue a contract by May 15, we've automatically renewed somebody, even if that wasn't the intention. The next three slides are a little bit overwhelming, I know that. The point in the next three slides, though, is I made a crosswalk. The state statutes and state board rules are themselves a little bit overwhelming. This crosswalk for academic, human resources, and financial flexibility, the purpose of this is to show the 46 different waivers that we're requesting. And it's supposed, this is, the point of this is to show you that the, the, if we previously waived or not, like you can see here, that there's a few that have an N next to them, like the nutrition, hygiene, etiquette, and social graces. We did not previously waive it. It shows you the description of what it is and the purpose, like how Glen County schools would implement it. So these are the 17 academic waivers. This slide is even more. These are the 19 human resources waivers. And like, here's the multi-year contracts we were just talking about. And then these are the 10 financial flexibility. And I know it's difficult to read. I don't expect you to be able to read this. In a second, I'll show you, uploaded it to Assembly for you guys and then for the public as well. There's the draft Appendix A that's attached to this for your review. And Appendix A gets much more in-depth than this crosswalk does. Appendix A lists out each waiver request, the implementation details, any associated student improvement outcomes, the major program flexibility rationales. We had to write a big rationale for each group, the academic, human resources, and financial. And then we had to write narratives for each of the waivers as well, how we would use them. So where does that leave us? Well, we're right there. The application's been developed, it's been submitted, we received feedback from Godot, we added on that feedback to modify some of our application narratives and sent the response back in. It's been approved by the state and now we're excited to share that with you guys. And that's all in Appendix A. Every bit of that is in Appendix A. So pending your approval, we would send that, the State Department would send that off to the State Board of Education. They meet June 13. And they will hear our request for flexibility as well as other districts throughout the state of Georgia and hopefully have that in place by July 1. And as I said, there are three documents, three additional documents that are in Assembly for you guys. The draft contract, which I just kind of provided a brief overview is there. It's what you received last month. Appendix A, which has all of the implementation details, student improvement outcomes where applicable, the overarching flexibility rationales, and then the one-page resolution that we would complete and send back to the state. Do you guys have any questions about that? I know it's kind of brief, but I don't know how it would go through 46 different waivers.
So the multi-year contract, when you say multi-year contract vision, that just gives us flexibility to push out to the May 15 deadline? Or can you offer teacher multi-year contracts? Because that's what it sounds like. Just to make sure.
It does sound.
Everything's still a year.
It does sound like that. It's still a one-year.
Okay, I got you.
The only, the only caveat to multi-year is superintendent's mentioned in there.
Sure, yeah, yeah, right.
That's, I think that's the only reason they call it multi-years, because the superintendent is specifically mentioned in there.
Okay.
But in Appendix A, when you, when you take a look at that, when you look at multi-year contracts, we list out how we would plan to do it.
Perfect.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. All right, Mr. Blackerby, you are up.
Okay, several items for approval this month. First is a change order. This is for Phase Two of the Oglethorpe Point modifications and renovations, which was primarily the kitchen renovations. And this is a credit back for $31,740.27 back, out of the contingency, back to the, back to the school system. Any questions? The next item, this is a approval of our Microsoft enrollment for education subscription. This is essentially the licenses for all of our Microsoft Office and Windows products. The quote, as you can see, is here and it's the total amount, $181,090.78. This is a little bit of an increase over the previous years. One, one primary reason for that other than just inflation is, and is, is it at the top? Yeah, there it is. A5, A5 there. Previously, we did not have this item, the A5 security. This allows for, again, based on our recent issues we've had, this gives greater endpoint security for our Windows devices that are in our schools. And this essentially covers a little over 1,500 devices throughout the school system, primarily teacher and admin computers. Any questions? We have several food service, school nutrition approvals. This is a bid renewal for our milk products to TG Lee for approximately $410,000. Again, that depends on how much milk we actually buy, but that's based on the renewal. As you can see down there, we're able to renew up to four years. And this is just a, a renewal of that current bid that we have to TG Lee. We also have the renewal for food and this goes to two different suppliers, excuse me, one supplier, but two different categories, the USDA food and, and then just the other products that we purchase for $3.1 million and $71,000. And again, this is also a renewal. Paper products. There is a little issue with the title of this. This is actually not a bid renewal. They're like, do need to get that changed. This is actually a new bid. It's not a, a renewal, but it is to Sun Coast for $244,517. And again, this is all the paper products for school nutrition. Probably the most important one is a single-serve pizza, which is also a bid renewal for $106,000. And this is a, a piggyback bid, which I believe it's, that doesn't say, but this comes through, I believe, the Fayette County. Excuse me, I am wrong on that. This is not a piggyback bid. This is the, this is just through Bull's Eye Brand Smart Mouth Pizza in Atlanta.
Would that be included in the free meals?
Yes.
Then we may go up more than 20, 26 meals per day.
Commodity processing bid. And this is the piggyback bid through Fayette County. And you can see the Gold Creek, the richest products, Made Right, Rookwood Farms, Smucker's, and JTM. And the amounts are there. And one final, this is for Prodo, $260,000 garden wholesale for the USDA funds. Any questions on the school nutrition bids?
I've got a question. It's not, since we're talking school nutrition, it's not about the business there. But back to what Mr. Daniels said, and to kind of piggyback what Hank was saying, I, I think right now, even if you're paying full price for your lunch, there's a, you can't, is there a limited amount of swipes you can do a day? Can you buy four lunches? That is my question.
You can buy what you want.
Yeah.
Okay, so how, so when we, when we offer everybody free lunch, we're still on swipe, right? And you're, you get one and you can buy.
You can come back and pay another one, yeah.
So you can get one and come back and buy. I just want to be clear. I just, I didn't, I didn't.
Yeah.
Everybody still have to swipe to count, count how many.
And going back to what Hank said, you know, she said we needed to increase by 20 or 28.
It'll be way more.
If, if, right. But if, if someone has a sandwich and they want some chip, if they had brought their sandwich from home and they go up and swipe and get some chips, they count it. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does. But so everybody still have to swipe and put their ID number in, their student ID, but it'll just come back on, phone them for change or have.
Your dollar for sure.
Or you might have.
You're getting them, yeah. You're getting a peanut butter and jelly sandwich a day.
So my kid can't get three meals.
He can't. He's had to pay for three. He'd have to pay for two of them.
Uh, okay.
We did this during COVID, right? So it's not going to be anything new.
Yeah, I just, I just, I didn't remember.
Yeah.
I went after earlier, I forgot.
It was a different reason, but, yeah.
Stellamar's Cafeteria Furniture, as we are.
What about teacher lunches?
They're still like $4.50.
Okay.
They stay the same.
Sorry, I apologize.
They don't subsidize those.
What about board member lunches?
Same thing, same as teachers.
There's your pizza there.
There's your same as teachers.
I'm sorry, okay, good.
So we're asking for approval for the purchase of new Stellamar's Cafeteria furniture. As part of the renovation, we are adding a lot of additional seating into the cafeteria, but we also are upgrading the furniture in there. This is for cafeterias redefined in Peachtree City, Georgia, purchasing the tips, purchasing cooperative. The total cost on that, well, $181,000, or $187,020.77. This is a different supplier. This is a different supplier than we've used for the last couple. We felt like we needed to get some, get additional pricing in this, this company, all this through the TIPS pricing contract. Has a good product and also provided, you know, very good pricing based on the market we're dealing in right now. Playground equipment for the new play area at St. Simon's Elementary, once we finish the site work there. This is through Superior Recreation Products, purchased through the Bible, purchasing cooperative, one hundred ten thousand, four hundred and twenty-seven dollars and sixty-nine cent.
Any questions for Mr. Blackeberry? We will move on to Ms. Seals.
Good evening. The first one is our school psychologist RFP. We're asking that you please approve this particular bid. It's for our school psychologist services. I skipped over one, sorry. School psychologist services through Sunbelt Staffing. It'll be a virtual psychology service with the cost per person, per hour, that's listed there. We have used Sunbelt before for other things, so this is just going ahead and trying to secure these staff members or get the services before other school districts go out and try to, to get them, claim them.
Being virtual, would they still be Georgia-certified or licensed?
They still have to go through, they have to pass a background check. We do go through the Professional Standards Commission with many of their things, many of, many of them.
Are we guaranteed a certain number of hours or anything like that?
If they can find the staff. Of course, that depends on if they can find the staff as well. But I will say this, we've had much better luck with finding people virtually than in person for school psychology. Any questions about that one? I'm going to go back up to the SOP. We're asking that you please award the bid for schools, for speech-language pathology also to Sunbelt Staffing. We did an RFP for that, and these services may come from in-person or virtual staff member or person for these particular services. We've used, Mr. Mowbray is here tonight as well, too, to answer any additional questions that I might not be able to answer.
Have you guys met Mr. Mowbray?
No.
Special Education Director. Stand up there. This is Eric Mowbray, U.S.R. Special Education.
But this gives us an opportunity, again, to try to go ahead and secure people with them, so we're not waiting until later in the summer to try to find these staff, these staff to serve our children.
How are we going to reconcile their invoices that come in? For, if you get an invoice for a thousand hours or whatever, how are we going to marry that with, you know, what child received what services on what date?
We have-
Is there an affidavit episode? How does that work?
We also have facilitators.
Every clinician, whether you're in-person or virtual, has to keep the minutes for the services that are rendered for every student.
Right.
So if we had to reconcile, and so every week I have to go through and approve the time that they're sending in.
Okay.
And if anything were to be out of the norm, then it would be, I need your service logs to see if you've updated your survey. And then that also kind of balances out when we check every month with Medicaid billing.
Okay.
We can kind of see if your billing is really low or really high, there might be a difference.
But you, but you have, I mean, you're reviewing a weekly for, how can you deserve?
Are we still putting an emphasis on, you know, in-person speech-language pathology and psychology and all the virtual? I know it's tough to find folks, but I think we can replace something face-to-face.
I, I agree with you. We are still trying to find school psychologists and school, and speech-language pathologists. We would much rather have people in person. But the truth is, more and more people want to work from home.
After COVID.
And of course, we would rather have, and we continue to look for that. There are also exit clauses in all of these if we find people in person as well. But yes, sir, we would prefer to have someone in person, and we will continue to look for them.
Because when you're doing patho, you know-
It's tough.
It's occupational therapy, speech therapy, whatever, it's, you know, you may not be able to get the whole surrounding.
Dr. Spencer and I had a conversation, kind of about, same thing not long ago, but yes, sir, I, I agree wholeheartedly. I think nothing can replace a person who cares about their craft and cares about children in front of a child. Nothing, nothing can replace that. So, but we're, we're having to find Band-Aids to help service our children, provide them with the services that they need to maintain what we have stated that their IEPs say they need. And so this is what we have to do right now.
I've always said, if the Wiggles could teach calculus, my kids would be geniuses. But, you know, but they still need to be in-person, in my opinion.
I don't disagree with you. I don't disagree.
Is there a way to push that? Because I'm a hundred percent with him with that.
Face-to-face, in-person.
I actually had a phone call with someone I'm working with as well to try to see if they can help us with more people in person as well, but-
I mean, is it money?
I don't think it's money. I, I don't think it's money. I just think it's preference.
Well, if we, I just, if you don't provide that preference, then they, they don't have a job. You see what I'm saying?
Yes.
I'm not trying to manipulate. I'm trying to make sure our children get that perfect education.
And I will tell you that what we have found, and I was talking to Ms. Miller about this as well, and that is, is becoming more and more difficult to get into SOP programs. There are fewer and fewer in our state now than there used to be, so it's more difficult to get into those programs because there are fewer of them. So you've got people who are graduating with four-year degrees waiting to get into SOP programs, and they can't get in because there are fewer programs. So that's another issue that's happening as well. But we're looking at some workarounds with that as well that I might, think might be helpful, so we're just trying to, to work through those things.
Sounds difficult.
Yeah, it is. Her next one is for visual impairment and occupational services. You had a question, Ms.? And occupational services. Same thing, we're continuing receiving these services from Allied Instructional Services for visual impairment occupational services. It'll be renewed for four one-year terms at the same terms that we're already working with them. Any questions about this? The next is another renewal for our speech services. We talked a little bit about that already. Same terms that we've had. We're continuing these services with connected speech therapy services, renewed for four one, one-year terms at the same, at the same conditions.
So these last two, are they in-person? The visual impairment, occupational, and the speech therapy?
So actually, that should say visual impairment and orientation mobility, not occupational. And yes, they are in-person. And then as for the secondary RFP, the speech therapy, I think it's twenty-four oh seven, that is actually virtual. That went into effect last year, but only was an RFP for one virtual, and so we had to reapply this year because unfortunately, we're going to need one.
And finally, the Medicaid billing services. We're asking that you renew the current RFP to continue receiving services from Asset Works Risk Management for Medicaid billing services, same terms as we've had before.
Any questions from Ms. Seals? And moving on, we'll go to East Plus Projects.
Mr. Blackeberry? If there's no objections, I'll combine, combine East Plus Projects and the, and the Goody report. So as far as update on our, our current projects, we are still working feverishly at St. Simon's on Phase Five. We renovate the, the old nineteen forty-three building. We are, right now, basically, we've done all the demolition, got all the water and sewer back in place, and we are now working on the, the electrical and HVAC primarily. A new roof is on the building, and also framing in the windows. There's also a lot of extensive site work going on, so if you drive by there, you'll notice there's a lot of work going on in the driveway, the new, the new canopy that will connect the gym and the admin area, as well as the courtyard area, which is where the, the playground equipment will go. As we start next week, we will be closing down the dining area, the cafeteria. The kitchen is brand-new, so it's going to stay operational, so they'll still be preparing the lunches, but they'll be delivered to the two-story building to eat there for the remainder of the school year, because we need to, we do need to do the demolition on the cafeteria, the dining area, part of that, so we can have that ready to go as the school starts next year. We'll also be changing the bus drop-off next week, so that, again, we can continue our work up in the front of the building, because right now the buses are dropping off, going and picking up at the front of the cafeteria. So although the new driveway connecting Dimbree and Ocean is not fully complete, we do have the base layer of asphalt down, and we, we are preparing to bring buses, buses through, through the new drive, starting next week, to, to start dropping kids off there at the gym area, essentially, so they'll be driving through the property. It likes to be a little safer situation than what they're currently doing, and will also get them closer to their classes without having, having to go through the construction zone. As to St. Thomas, the eight classroom addition, that, we're kind of at a holding pattern on the eight right now, is, the work is essentially done. HVAC is installed, the lighting is installed. We haven't put the ceiling tiles in yet because we, we haven't completely sealed the building up. We don't want, want the moisture in there right now. And we are holding off on the floor because we're going to use that area for storage for the teacher materials as we start to renovate the existing building in the summer. Our plans right now are, as soon as students leave on the last day of school, the teachers, they already have boxes, and we have a plan in place to start moving them out of their classrooms and storing, again, in the new eight classrooms, as well as in the gym, so we can renovate the three wing, three classroom wings this summer, as well as the admin area. The new kitchen, we have all the masonry work essentially done on the outside, again, doing ma, basically HVAC and electrical work on the inside, as well as doing some, some roofing. As we approach midsummer, we should have the kitchen substantially complete and ready for the kitchen equipment, and be ready, be ready for the start of the school year. The new, what we're calling the west driveway, it runs Akai. We have everything lined up, ready to start as soon as school gets out. Contractors have already been on-site, you know, doing some of their prep work, and we have a few things that, from the school staff perspective, we have to take care of. We have a new moveable well, irrigation well, and some other things, so we're in the process of doing that right now, so that we can start work as soon as, as soon as school gets out. We see no issues with finishing the driveway and the parking lot for the start of the school year. Again, like I believe I mentioned a couple of meetings, the, the new cupboard canopy will most likely not be here for the start of the school year. We were originally thinking it may not be here till November, December. We've gotten maybe a little better projection now, and it may be here a little earlier in the fall, but we'll be, we'll be ready to start school there, at least with the new driveway and, and parking lot. And the renovations at the Goodyear Gym, which is new floor, metal wall panels, roof, and, and some painting. We, again, we're kind of waiting for some of the end-of-the-year school activities to get over, so we can start there. Materials are already delivered and on-site. They're sitting, sitting there at the bus loop, ready to go, so we can start work there as soon as, as soon as the school is ready for us to do that at the end of the year. Not an East Plus project, but as you see, we, we have fully started the demolition on the second wing here, and much the exit only, because it's going into the constructions over there, but probably towards the end of next week, we should be completed on the demolition portion, and then it'll be time to start, start putting it back together. Any questions on any of the projects? And as far as the Goody report goes, and Ms. Cody mentioned, the March sales tax collection, but we do have the April numbers in here with, with our comparative chart. And you can see, we were, actually, this is the first month we've been this way, we were actually down a little bit over the previous April report, by a hundred, one hundred eighty thousand, I believe it was. But with these numbers, we still believe we're on track to, we will probably hit our target at the end of, at the end of this month, at the end of May. We're about two-point-nine million off, and last May, we collected around two-point-nine million, so we should be pretty close. But with that, we do get the continued collections through the end of the quarter, so we do get at least probably an extra month's collections, if not more, on that.
Any questions for Mr. Blackeberry?
And Mr. Dempsey is here, where he wants to be. Yeah, he's, he's the one that's preparing our Goody report now, so if you have any questions, he can answer that.
It's the first month you come, we got numbers everywhere. I mean, I appreciate it.
I don't know if we want to make the announcement about the, we did have an increase in the projected funds from interest.
Yeah.
That we went up, it'll, it's in your report there. We went up three hundred thousand for what has happened so far in our projections forward, but I did get new numbers, just not in time to be able to do an increase on these reports. But we're looking at, between East Plus Three and East Plus Four, the new projections show about two million dollars more than what we had expected, because interest rates have stayed up in, you know, four and a half to five percent area of return there. Recalculated those projections, and that's what we're looking at.
Moving on, we're going to talk about our East Plus Five resolution, and we have the ballot question. I actually, I think I emailed that to each of you. So do you have any questions about moving forward with a vote in November?
I don't have a question. I just want to have a clarification, and I think I do this every time we come to property tax and, and East Plus, but I've heard some folks say this is a new tax. This is not a new tax. We're projecting this current East Plus might end by June thirtieth. So therefore, the Glen County sales tax rate would drop to six percent from seven percent through the end of the year. If this measure is passed, it would go back to seven percent January first. So it's not a new tax. It's what we have currently now. We're not moving to, looking to move to eight percent. I just wanted to clarify.
We'll be asking you to vote for the resolution on Tuesday night. Finally, we have an MOU for staging first responders. This is in case the governor, if someone wants to pull that up for me. I don't have one of those little things to do.
See that?
Somebody quit something.
So we've had this in place for quite some time. If you remember the, geez, the last time we used it would have been five or six years ago, when we actually had to use Brunswick to stage first responders. This is just an MOU between the county and us, saying that we will allow them to use, basically, Brunswick School to stage first responders if there is a state of emergency. We would be, we would have, school would be shut down. And it just outlines the things that we would need to do. We are responsible for the charges that we have as a school system. The county is responsible for their charges, but if there's other agencies that come in and that, you know, and we have to spend money, we will be reimbursed by the county. But if we have our officers out working, we will pay for it. Any questions on this MOU, a continuation of what we already have? That is all I have.
So, I don't have it checked with everybody. I know we'll have personnel for executive session.
Land and safety.
Mr. Lincoln, do you have anything? Okay.
That's what I know.
Okay. So I'll entertain a motion to enter into executive session for personnel, land, and safety.
Somebody.
Thank you, Dr. Yergin. Motion by Dr. Yergin.
Second.
Second by Mr. Madala. All those in favor of entering into executive session? It's unanimous at six oh five. It's unanimous at 6:05.
Open session and a second for Mr. Mansel.
Better than a cloud, Mike.
All right, we're taking a vote on returning to open session.
Who was the second?
Mr. Mansel. It's unanimous at 6:51.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Dr. Jurgen. Motion by Dr. Jurgen to adjourn, second by Ms. Gibbons. All those in favor, it's unanimous at 6:51.
We can drag this out for a couple of minutes.